All matters of consent agenda, we consider it into one motion. And will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separate. Are there any item on the consent agenda that the commissioners wish to remove?
I will remove item number three for a separate vote in the kind of conflict of interest under licenses. License for Buffalo Bob's fourth house liquor licenses up and just up for approval tonight. So we'll take that as a separate item. Any item on the consent agenda the public would like to remove for separate discussion?
So we have the balance of the consent agenda. In addition to that, we have claims in the amount of $2,127,797.42. That concludes the payroll. There's two items here.
Separate.
And additionally, the payroll of $1,878,274.38. I hear motion for approval of the consent agenda, last item number three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved Amyk, second Cromwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie Spiebo. I'd ask the vice mayor to conduct the meeting. Item number three, the consent agenda.
Item three is an item to approve licenses recommended to city clerk's office. Is there any public comment on this item? Any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe we should talk about this.
Let's leave him back there.
If we have a staff report.
If we don't have any serious objections, is there a motion to approve item three on the consent agenda? Okay, commissioner?
Second.
Motion to approve item three by Commissioner Amyk, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero with Mayor Shum abstaining.
Did you call for a police report?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Back to you.
Next on the agenda, we have the city manager's report.
Mayor members of the commission, just a few items to highlight in this week's report. Another reminder to update your statements of substantial interest. We do this about this time every year. If you've got any questions, I think Jonathan will be happy to help you with complying with that state law requirement. We have posted online the 2011 annual report. Again, congratulations out to Megan and all those that participated in putting that together. I think it's a good document that shows that we had a good year in a number of projects and programs throughout the community. We also use that report in some of our discussions with legislators and businesses and such. So I think it's a valuable tool for the city. In response to commission interest, I know Commissioner Carter and others asked for information about our downtown development process. Scott's department put together the attached memo. There's also attachments to that as well. You can begin to see the layers and the different procedures that we have in regards to downtown development. This was meant just for informational purposes. It's not initiating anything or adopting anything. I think it's valuable information to have. Also got information on the March building permits, first quarter through. You know, good news in some areas, still challenges in others. Continue to appreciate all the investment that we see in the community and continue to hope for continued growth in that area. Mayor, in your packet this evening, you've got letters thanking a number of law enforcement jurisdictions for helping with our final four celebrations. And the reason why I mention that is that we get mutual aid from other communities. We also participate in helping other communities as well. And here you see a number of city departments that helped with the tornado recovery there in Harveyville, there southwest of Topeka. I know Jonathan went over and helped them with some of the city clerk paperwork. And we had a number of other departments here, primarily Parks and Recreation, and our GIS coordinator helping with just doing some of the cleanup, the damaged trees. So we benefit from other jurisdictions and we like to help out others that need assistance as well. So appreciation for that. Our bicycle advisory committee has adopted a work plan and revised their bylaws, and you see some information about that. Spring break activities out at the golf course. Information about public meetings in regards to the Oriet Overlay District Design Guideline process. That's obviously a very important proceedings, and we hope for very good participation in that. Hired a consultant. All of that work will obviously then come back to you as it gets processed. Staff, planning commission, and eventually city commission. And finally, we've got a sustainability grant from a national organization that's going to help us with technical assistance on energy efficiency programs, primarily in the commercial building sector. This is not a process where we're talking about adopting new regulations, trying to help commercial building owners in some of their sustainability efforts, how they can reduce energy and such. So Cynthia and Eileen and others are working on that. Be happy to respond to any questions you have on this week's report.
Dave, just curious, on the Oriet, the meetings related to the Oriet Neighborhood Plan?
Yes, sir.
How have we sent that information out so far?
Scott, you might let us know about that.
Commissioner Carter, I may need to confirm, but as I recall, we sent mailed notice as well as probably used our email listserv from the neighborhood planning effort itself. But I do know that we sent mailed notice to everybody that would be affected within the boundaries of those overlay districts.
Great. Thanks.
Moving on to a regular agenda item. Item number one is the continuance of a public hearing that has to do with the HRC and 901, I'm sorry, 900 New Hampshire Street. So this is a continued hearing from an earlier meeting.
That is correct. We are continuing the hearing. All the information is not being compiled. So tell our commission that you don't take public comments receiving.
Right.
We continue it until April 24th.
This had been slated for an earlier date. I can't remember, a couple of weeks ago, maybe. The information wasn't in. They asked for a continuance. We thought we might have that by this date. We don't have the information, and we probably won't have it for about two more weeks. Is that a correct estimate?
It's misunderstood.
So do we need to make a motion to continue the meeting?
I believe that would be appropriate.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue the public hearing until April 24th.
Second that.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five oh. That item is continued until April 24th. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting a first reading ordinance number 8725 prohibiting the parking of large vehicles and recreational vehicles on Massachusetts Street from 11th Street to South Park, South Park Street, South Park Street to Vermont Street, New Hampshire Street, and Vermont Street from South Park to 11th Street. Staff, please.
Mayor and fellow commissioners, my name is Chad Sablett. I'm an assistant city attorney here, and I'm here this evening to introduce ordinance number 8725, which deals with the parking of large vehicles, RVs, and campers in certain areas within the city of Lawrence. Over the last two or three weeks, and even before that, we started getting concerns from citizens regarding different safety issues with those vehicles and with some vehicles that have been parked on Massachusetts Street, essentially between 11th and South Park Street, South Park Street to Vermont, and back on Vermont Street between South Park and 11th Street. Specifically, the concerns are it's difficult to see around those vehicles, that there is a crosswalk from one side of the park to the other, that there's lots of children and families that use that crosswalk and use that park, and those vehicles being parked there make it difficult to kind of navigate that area. That concern was even present in the Lawrence Journal World today. I looked at the comments. There was one comment that talked about how difficult it was to see around those vehicles in that area. So after receiving those concerns, began looking at an ordinance and what we could do about that issue. And the ordinance that's in front of you tonight deals specifically with certain types of vehicles: motorized self-propelled campers, non-motorized travel trailers, recreational vehicles, and trailers or vehicles or combination of trailers or vehicles that are eight feet in width, or 20 feet in length, or eight feet in height. So those are the vehicles that we're talking about that would be affected by this ordinance. Those different types of campers and trailers are defined by Kansas statute. So when we look at, how do we define this? How are we going to look at this? It's defined in Chapter Eight of the Kansas statutes. And I can go into detail of what those are if you'd like me to at a later point. It prohibits parking, as we said, on Massachusetts Street between 11th and South Park, South Park Street between Vermont and Vermont Street, and South Park to 11th. There are two exceptions. It's actively loading or unloading. So if there are vehicles that are actively loading or unloading for an event that is taking place in either of those parks, that exception is present. And if we're providing a service to the abutting property. So if there is an event going on and somebody has a vendor license or are providing a service, that's an exception. The penalties for violating this ordinance on the first occasion is a $50 fine, second occasion is a $50 fine, and notice that if there's three violations within a 10-day period, that the vehicle is subject to immediately being towed. That allows us to give them notice of the vehicle being towed because we are removing that vehicle, and we need to do that to give them that notice. So that's the reason that we have that the ordinance is in front of you today, tonight, and the specifics of the ordinance. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff?
Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take public comment on this. And we'd like to limit your time to five minutes, and you need to state your name and sign in. So at this time, the floor is open for public comment.
My name is Brian Sultana. I see this ordinance as a very pointed attack at a few individuals. Legislative bodies have terms for this kind of legislation, bills of attainder. And this seems to be just what this is. Doesn't, in my mind, seem to have any other purpose but driving off the unsavory in our community as seen by some. And so if that's what it is, I strongly object.
Thank you very much. Additional comment?
My name's Jane Pennington, and I happen to live on Massachusetts Street. And I support this ordinance. It is difficult to see around those vehicles. I always wonder what's in that bucket that is sitting on the street. God only knows. And I think the impression that people have driving through our city is not winning any favors by having those vehicles there. So as a property taxpaying citizen, I would support this ordinance to maintain the ambiance and friendly welcoming nature of South Park.
Thank you. Additional public comment? No other comment? All right. Commission discussion. Commissioners?
Mayor, just comment briefly. It seems to me that we've all been approached over the last several months about people having a hard time seeing up and down Massachusetts Street because of the large structures that exist. I think that staff is to be commended on coming up with a way that, you know, would help take care of the problem so that we wouldn't have, you know, obstructions of being able to try to see around vehicles, especially down around the park where there is, you know, there's a lot of activity, kids, and, you know, a lot of people out and around. So this takes care of only the situation of very large vehicles. And I think that that is the thing that's really presented the problem here. It's nothing else other than that, is this is a public safety question, and in my mind anyway, and that something that's important to make sure that, you know, that we respond to the concerns that, you know, the public has had in this.
I have had a number of complaints from citizens who were concerned about the parking, the sanitation of the vehicle, as well as concern for children who play in the park. So with that, I asked the staff to draw an ordinance, and here we are tonight. So I think it's very appropriate, and I think it goes to the question of our charge of office, the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and I believe that we should uphold that for our citizens. I'd entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 8725.
On first reading.
On first reading.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded Cromwell, Carter. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Next item is to consider the initiation of the following land use items, and we'll have staff make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Scott McCullough with the Planning and Development Services Department. This item is intended to initiate the process necessary to support a recreation facility located at the northwest corner of Sixth Street, Sixth Street here and K-10 Highway, the northwest corner, approximately 146 acres. The project includes developing a recreation center on approximately 50 acres on the northern portion of the property, generally this area. The project details are in the early stages of development, but discussions are focused on the 50 acres containing a recreation center, sporting and event arena, and potential for KU athletic facilities. The remaining acreage in this area would be planned for commercial and recreation uses that would complement the recreation center. Annexation, rezoning, plating, and site planning will need to be completed for the project. Annexation is scheduled to be reviewed by the planning commission at their April meeting. The amendments being requested this evening will be scheduled for the May planning commission. Plating, site planning, and specific project programming will be developed as the annexation and zoning of the property are processed. A neighborhood meeting is planned for later this month to educate owners on the project and to receive input on the land use components of the project. The city commission will be the final decision-making body on all of these amendments and the rezoning request. The project is located on property designated in Horizon 2020 as suitable for industrial, office, and warehouse uses under the existing plans. It is part of a commercial node that is limited to 400,000 square feet of retail. The Mercado development on the northeast corner of the intersection uses 340,000 square feet of the available 400,000 square feet. The uses related to the recreation center, as well as the commercial uses located outside of the 50-acre property intended to support the recreation center, do require commercial zoning and an increase in commercial capacity at this node. A comprehensive plan amendment is necessary to accommodate the project. Currently, Horizon 2020 designates commercial nodes as either CC 200 or 200,000 square feet of retail, CC 400 or 400,000, or CR, which is community regional at 1.5 million square feet of commercial. Staff believes that it is appropriate to analyze this location for a new category of CC 600 or 600,000 square feet of retail, to get in between that gap between 400,000 and 1.5 million, especially given its adjacency to the transportation network in the context of the West of K-10 plan. Amendments to the development code are necessary. The commercial zoning districts in the development code are tied directly to the comprehensive plan, again, which designates this as a CC 400 node. A new zoning district will be necessary to accommodate the increase in commercial use and zoning. Again, staff believes that a CC zoning district should be created to serve the subject property, and finds that it would be an appropriate zoning tool to accommodate the project. Staff is requesting really three action steps for you tonight. One is to initiate amendments to the appropriate sections of the comprehensive plan as outlined in your packet. The other second request would be to initiate amendments to the appropriate sections of Chapter 20, the land development code. And the third would be to initiate rezoning the entire property to the CC 600 district, which would be created through this process. It is important to note, again, that initiating these amendments begins the process to determine the project's compatibility with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the compatibility with nearby neighbors to the project. The city commission will consider all of these items at a future date, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this planning issue, this series of planning issues? Okay. Commission discussion? I'm having a hard time getting anybody to talk tonight.
I've been trying to keep my mouth shut. That's what I've been told, to keep my mouth shut. I think it's a good first step in a very important project, potentially, and I think it's important that we take that step and lay the groundwork, and we'll learn a lot as we move along here. But I think this is the way we begin that, so.
Well, and as Scott informed us, this is just the beginning step. It'll be back here for us for final approval. So there's lots of time to hear from citizens and make adjustments or concur with what the planning commission has to say. So any other comments from the city commission?
Just one. Scott, the, I read in the packet that, or somewhere here, that the, gosh, losing it, that the study was done, and CC 600 is not anticipated to affect the transportation plan for that area. In other words, what we're currently planning to do would suffice even for this upgrade without needing to change that plan.
Yes, in fact, your next item is going to look at that, the transportation corridor plan, your next agenda item. You'll receive a presentation on that, but that's likely where you read that in the packet.
Yeah.
Was that we have had probably a benefit to both projects is the timing of the fact that the recreation center has been presented as an opportunity. The corridor plan started a while back, and so we've made, we're nearing its end. And when the recreation center presented itself, we actually asked the consultant on that to run some preliminary traps and review and analysis. And the initial findings are that the corridor plan can support and does support the proposed uses there, along with the proposed uses that were used as the assumptions of the corridor plan, which was for the industrial warehouse and office uses.
Great. Thank you.
Is, should this be three separate motions?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve, to send to planning commission.
Mayor, I'd move to initiate comprehensive plan amendment to develop CC 600 policies, the development code, text amendment to create CC 600 zoning district and rezoning to the pending CC 600 district for property located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of West Sixth Street and Highway 40 and K-10 bypass to accommodate a regional recreation facility.
Been moved by Carter?
Second.
Seconded by Dever. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five oh. All right. Next on the agenda is to receive and adopt the US 40 and K-10 area transportation plan. We'll have a staff presentation on this item.
Good evening, Mayor. City Commissioners, I'm Jason Hoskinson with BG Consultants. And of course, here, I'm here tonight to present an update on the KDOT-sponsored area transportation plan, Highway 40 and K-10 interchange. You'll see that the action item is actually requesting adoption of the transportation plan. Really, what we're looking for tonight is just to give you an update, so you can kick back and relax and enjoy the presentation. And then at a later date, with, say, a month or two from now, KDOT will present an implementation agreement to the city to actually formally adopt the plan. So. I'm going to go through just a brief presentation here and hit some of the highlights of the plan. Before I do that, I just want to kind of give you a background. Some of you have been involved with this from the onset, and others may not have. In 2010, KDOT staff recognized the need to develop some type of transportation plan around this area, realizing the community was growing that way, and there was no specific detailed plan in place to address how the Highway 40 corridor may look moving forward. So in 2010, KDOT staff approached the city, the Lawrence Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Douglas County to form a partnership to fund the development of this plan. That went through towards the end of 2010. That's when the consultant team of BG Consultants and Wilbur Smith were brought onboard. We basically spent the most of 2011 looking at the needs of the area, developing recommendations, meeting with property owners, developers, development groups, and a number of other stakeholder groups to develop what we think is a fairly comprehensive plan. So. This first slide that I have in here kind of gives you a context of why this plan is needed. And this is a map that's actually off of the Lawrence Douglas County website, Planning and Development Services website. And certainly don't expect you to be able to read the text from where you're at unless you have a bigger picture on your computer there. But there's a, this is the map of Lawrence through the years, and you can see the street grid on the map. There's eight snapshots here. Excuse me. And if we start at the top left, you can see the street grid, or the street network as it is today. The red dot right there is Highway 40 and K-10, so that's the interchange. And then the gray area, the shaded gray area is the city footprint. And the top left is the city of Lawrence before the 1940s. And then through the decades, you've got 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, so on and so forth, until we get down to basically where we're at today. And if you can see this, there's a general trend of the city growing westward. Like any of us that have been here for more than a couple of decades, or even less than that, realize how much growth to the west the city has experienced. So as of today, the city limits are at K-10. Utilities are in place to cross K-10. Some of them have already crossed K-10. But there is no specific detailed transportation plan to address traffic safety, the operations, the mobility of the interchange itself, and future land access going westward from K-10. So that's where we come into play with this transportation plan. And recognizing that transportation needs are directly linked to future land uses, we started a process where we looked at future land use growth potential in this area. And this is a graphic from the transportation plan itself. We've got Highway 40 running east-west, and we've got K-10 running north-south, so the interchange is right there. The limits, the detailed limits of what we were looking at for future land uses and transportation needs started with George Williams Way on the east and went about a mile and a half through the interchange to what's currently E-800 Road. And we looked at about a half mile either side of the corridor and how those future land uses could impact the transportation system in the future. From that, we were able to generally tie some planning level transportation demands to those future land uses. And this graphic here kind of gives you a current day and a potential future traffic demand that we could anticipate, reasonably anticipate seeing on the Highway 40 corridor. To the east of the interchange, you've got a current daily volume of just over 10,000 vehicles a day. That's expected to That's expected to roughly triple over the next 30, 40 years or so to approximately 33,000 vehicles a day. Likewise, on the west side of the interchange, you can see we're at about 6,200 vehicles per day currently, and the interesting thing about that is that that number has actually been declining a bit over the years. I presume, or speculate, it's probably got to do with the expansion of the turnpike to six lanes and making that the more efficient route between Topeka and Lawrence. But based on the traffic demands and the transportation models, working with KDOT folks, we've estimated a roughly 29,000 vehicle per day transportation demand. That's more or less at buildout of the area, in the urban growth area west of K-10. Now, to qualify those dates, those are not necessarily set in stone dates. We're not standing here predicting that it's going to hit that number in 2040. It may take 30, 40, 50 years to get there, but from a planning-level horizon, we're looking at 2040 as our target year for full-scale volumes. From those transportation demands, we were then able to develop a number of recommendations and needs. We're looking both short-term and long-term. We put in a short-term scenario into the transportation plan, recognizing that although it would be nice to go build a $20 million facility to future-day needs, sometimes that's not always the most feasible route. So, we looked at what could some of the short-term expectations along this corridor be, and if we walk through this here, again, we've got the Highway 40 corridor running east-west and K-10 in the middle. I'm going to start on the right side. Some of the short-term improvements we've identified is the potential signalization of George Williams Way. As you all probably know, George Williams Way has been built to the north. That happened in 2008, right as the economy tanked, and it's kind of been sitting there ever since, but we would anticipate that any sizable development that happens within the Mercado area would trigger some type of need to signalize George Williams Way and potentially connect in some of the right-turn improvements that you can currently see out there being constructed. Another key short-term improvement that we've identified and is, it's actually in the design phase at the KDOT level, is improvements to the ramps themselves. If any of you have been out there in the evening, you may have seen a line of cars stacked up on the off-ramp, K-10 off-ramp, southbound to eastbound Highway 40. Cars line up there, nearly backing out onto the freeway. That has been recognized by KDOT. They've taken a proactive approach to design improvements to that. Those improvements would include additional turn lanes on the ramps and signalization of both of the ramp terminals with Highway 40. And then a third short-term improvement that we've identified is kind of out by the first church entrance. I think that's the best way to describe it. We've identified the potential need, and Scott just mentioned, possible development on this northwest quadrant of the interchange, but we've identified a potential need to improve Highway 40 at what's currently platted as John Wesley Drive out in that area. It's sort of at the top of the hill, if you can visualize going out that way. That improvement would include additional turn lanes on Highway 40. It would also require a need to change the vertical profile, basically cut the hill down about seven or eight feet going through there to provide safe and adequate site distance for folks trying to exit off of these properties and get onto the Highway 40 system. Those are some of the, I guess, the highlights, if you will, with the short-term improvements. Now, moving on to the long-term recommendations, and again, these are suggestions that could be implemented into the future. This is a large-scale view. We'll zoom in here in just a minute, but this is the overall corridor, again, K-10, Highway 40, George Williams, and then the west limits at E-800 Road. The long-term recommendations, what we're looking at here, or what we're recommending, is a four-lane urban-type arterial street, something similar to what you see east of K-10. That same theme sort of continued west through K-10 with a signalized full-access intersection spacing of roughly a quarter-mile to provide access into the future developments on these side-street properties. Going to zoom in on this area first, so we can kind of show you that, and then we'll go with the other color of KU to the west. Okay, long-term improvements, of course, we've got an improvement that was recently done, not quite 10 years ago, to Highway 40 east of K-10. The recommendation would be to pick that up and carry that through to the west, adding turn lanes to the bridge and actually widening the bridge over K-10 to accommodate pedestrians and all the turn lanes that will be needed for the operations to occur efficiently at the interchange. And then it would lead up to the John Wesley Drive intersection that eventually would go north into a future rec facility, as Scott had mentioned earlier. The other thing I'll point out with this, through developing this transportation plan, we met with a number of stakeholders, the EMS, fire, sheriffs, highway patrol, school districts, including property owners, and we also met with the Bicycle Advisory Committee. We recognize that getting pedestrians and bicyclists across K-10 is a big hurdle right now. There's nothing there except a wide bridge with fast traffic on it. Right now, there's a bike lane on the, or, excuse me, a bike path, shared-use path on the east side of K-10. It currently comes up and ties into a shared-use path on the south side of Highway 40, east of K-10. And we looked at a couple of options. One would be to carry that shared-use path on a widened bridge across K-10. That would be the most direct and shortest path to get from one side to the other. One disadvantage of that is they've got to interact with, bicyclists and pedestrians would have to interact with traffic at both of these intersections. So, we also looked at an alternate route to get pedestrians and bicyclists across a highway, and that included this red line here with a pedestrian bridge that would kind of sort of come south, elevate, and go over both of the ramps and K-10. Certainly a substantial cost with another structure, and one of the other things we found with that is the farther we get away from Highway 40, the less likely pedestrians will be using that route if they can use a sidewalk or a path directly across K-10. So, those are some of the pedestrian accommodations that are included as suggestions in the transportation plan. Again, on the street, we're looking at a four-lane urban arterial with a raised median to control access at the key points. First full-access intersection would be roughly a quarter-mile west of the interchange at John Wesley Drive. So, moving on to the next, here on the right side of the page, if we continue going west, John Wesley Drive, another full-access intersection at the half-mile road. This has already been adopted in the T-2030 as a minor arterial, if I remember right. Another access point to the adjacent properties at this quarter-mile, and then the first minor arterial would be one mile west of K-10. So, those are the highlights of the plan. There's certainly a lot of information in here, a lot more details that we can try to answer any questions you might have about. I added this slide. You may not have seen this in the packet. Since the agenda packet came out, the project has been updated and put on the website, on the KDOT website, so you can certainly go there and click any link and get any information you wish out of that. So, with that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks. I might have missed it. Was on the short-term, the signalization, right there? Any idea on a timeline of when?
That's been the key question that everybody asks, and Mike, you can correct me if I step out on a limb the wrong way here, but the anticipation is that as soon as design is complete, they will start searching for construction funds, they being KDOT, construction funds to implement those improvements, and the hope would be within a couple of years, that construction project will be moving forward.
Okay.
Maybe sooner if possible.
Just to follow, and this is maybe an odd one, but, and forgive my ignorance, but John Wesley Drive, one, do we know, are there any addresses on there currently, John Wesley Drive? I see there's a drive off to the church.
It's a platted street, but only sort of a future right-of-way, as I understand it, that is meant to serve the church in the future and any development that occurs east of the church and that facility.
Okay. And just curious if anybody knows, or if we don't, maybe if we could find out what the significance of that name, John Wesley Drive, is.
Yeah. The church started the Methodist Church.
Okay. Thank you.
Not the art of Methodist Church, but the Methodist Church.
Right. Like I said, forgive my ignorance. Thanks.
Other questions? Looks good. Looks like progress out there, so.
Thank you.
Just in time, too, it looks like, so.
Yes.
Thank you for your report.
Sure thing.
Or any comment from the public on this report?
Good evening, Commissioners. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor. My name is KT Walsh, and this is so minor, I hate to bring it up, and I thought I was the only one who did this, but I think that there needs to be more signage.
Okay.
This is where you actually get on the turnpike. I often turn here by mistake, and I used to think I was the only one.
No, I do it, too.
I do.
I've done it.
And I don't know if that's a city thing or a KDOT thing, but I just think a bigger sign or something.
Very good point, and it is confusing right now, and hopefully they can address that when they have the final schematics.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to comment? All right. Any other commission comments? Our action is to receive the report. Entertain a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Amix.
Second.
Second by Carter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Report is received five oh. This time, we're going to step into executive session for discussion for about 30 minutes under the client attorney privilege under the open meetings law. Be back in 30 minutes.
You have a motion.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I would move to enter to executive session for 30 minutes.
Second.
Moved in second, Endeavor, Carter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, five oh.[1371.58]
How he didn't extend, oops.
Okay, we're back from executive session, in which we've had a discussion with our legal counsel. And we will proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. If any member of the public wishes to make a statement, we would appreciate that you keep your... We'll limit your time to five minutes. And sir, if you'll please state your name and sign in for us, too.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'd like to start out by asking that we put the... Let's see, what was the ordinance?
I'll get it for you here. It's eighty-seven twenty... Eighty-seven twenty-five is the number of the ordinance you're...
Yeah, the item two on the agenda, right? I'm asking to put that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda next week. I spoke with Hilda Enoch, and she wants to speak on this issue. And I'd like to... A chance to defend the accusations that have been made against me in the newspaper and public. And I'm making that request now to put it back on the regular agenda item. And... I came here today, and I thought the other... The first, item one on the agenda list would take much longer, but I was... I thought it would've taken at least an hour from the last time I was here on that. And I haven't been here since before Christmas. And by the way, I'd like to thank everybody that supported me through the Christmas holidays. You know, I played a lot of Christmas carols out here en masse, and I want to thank everybody for their support. But right now, I'd like to talk to you about license plate numbers and city ordinance violations, okay? Because there's been people that have been committing crimes in this town against me. And we've had a lack of equal enforcement of the law here. Because I've got some vehicles up here that I think most of them belong to city workers. And we've been being... I've been being harassed by city workers from the time that my, you know, little house on the river got bulldozed until now. And I think most of the complaints that we're getting are from city workers. Now, the big city bucket truck and big city truck with toolboxes and the older truck with the flatbed, those are just three of the city trucks that have been coming by riding their horns down the side of my dressing room out here en masse that I use to entertain people in my business. And there's a lot of other numbers up there, too. And some of these guys, I believe, are employees, too. They're on their way to work in the morning, driving their own vehicles to their locations. And there are a couple of people that are going to court right now that are on this list here that I have pressed charges on, but not everybody is going to court right now. But there are other people that should be going to court right now on these charges. Now, I'd also like to mention before we're done, the water sprinklers out here in South Park have been running for over a week because the city's been harassing us and trying to create a breeding ground for mosquitoes out here. It's like a swamp out there right now. And nobody's been able to use that park all through the Easter holiday and all through Passover so far. And they've been pointing them right at our vehicles, too, which is harassment. The city workers should be doing their job and minding their own business and not worrying about us, our pursuit of freedom and happiness. They shouldn't be worrying about that. And also, there's a Silver Range Rover HSE with Colorado tag 799XSX, which I have a video of riding down the side of my dressing room at seven in the morning. And seven in the morning, anywhere from five... These guys have been doing it from between five and seven in the morning.
You have thirty seconds to wrap up, sir.
I know, five to seven in the morning. They've been doing this. Now, and I want to know is why, Aaron Cromwell, have you been riding your horn down the side? You and your wife been riding your horn down the side of my shack? And why is it that the police department will not press charges on you? I'm accusing you right now because I filmed you on a video. And I'm publishing these.
Mr. Tanner.
I'll pick up where he left off.
Just a minute, Mr. Tanner, your time's up.
No, leave that up there, Mike. Leave that up there.
Just a minute, no, just a minute. Let's do this the way we're supposed to do it, please.
You're already in violation of the way it's supposed to be.
Would you please sign in and state your name for us?
I sure will.
Thank you.
John R. Tuttle III. Mr. Tuttle, to you.
Wait, is he gonna answer the question? Are you gonna answer Mike's question?
I'm speaking. Hey, don't speak out of turn. I'm speaking. Can you start the clock now? Yeah, Mr. Cromwell, we'd like to know how come you and your wives aren't being prosecuted for the same ordinance that you guys have threatened me six months in jail over? Why is that? And I have a list of all your cohorts and constituents that are all accessories to the crimes, and they do include crimes of violation of the RICO law, the Sherman law, eighteen USC 241 and 242, and now your most recent... This ordinance that you passed on first review, which is an act of attainder, which is constitutionally illegal. And I'll read you a little definition here. Okay. "A legislative act that singles out an individual or group for punishment without a trial." "The Constitution of the U.S., Article I, Section Nine, Paragraph Three, provides that no bill of attainder or ex post facto may be passed into law." Okay? So you guys are way, 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 way out of your scope of authority, and you're telling on yourselves, and you're making this really easy for me. See? You're incriminating yourselves in a very obvious way, and the public needs to know. And the list of your cohorts, your accessories in the crimes do include Aaron Cromwell and his wife, Mike Amix, Mike Dever, Bob Shum, Hugh Carter, Tony Wheeler, Dave Corliss, Scott Miller, and Judge McGrath, Downtown Lawrence, Inc., Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, and many city workers, including clerks and administrators and members of the police department, which also violates eighteen USC 241 and 242, deprivation of civil rights. And then deprivation of civil rights in the color of the law, which is a direct violation of the RICO statute. And I do intend on pursuing this, no matter what you do. So you go ahead and pass your stupid little ordinance. Keep telling on yourselves. Because you obviously didn't learn anything from what I told you before about empathic connection to your community and being a good human being. See? That's real simple stuff that we're all supposed to know from the time we're in kindergarten. But I'll also thank you again because it served as some really good inspiration for a lot of good musical material. And I also want to thank all of my supporters in this town who are good human beings and make this town an awesome place despite all of you who are not so awesome, who are hateful, self-centered, bigoted individuals who need a strong lesson in ethics and morals. Your code sucks. I'm sorry. Your ethical code is almost nonexistent at best. And the citizens that your commission is serve deserve much better. And I want to say something to Lawrence PD. You all swore to uphold the Constitution and the laws of this nation, and you owe it to yourselves to understand those laws and know what they imply. And let those dictate the standards of your behavior in your treatment and enforcement of that which you are commissioned to do by your oath. And all that does apply to you city commissioners as well. You have a due service that you're not fulfilling, and you're violating citizens that your commission is serve. And this will all come out in the wash. And the sooner y'all come up off of your bad behavior and get right, the sooner I can move on with my life and get down to my music career, which is what I'd really rather be doing than fooling with you. And I do hate lawyers, but I might as well clap out. Thanks for the education.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Matthew Haller. I've been in this town for like six years. You guys probably don't know me, but I know all of you. I've been on these... I choose... Wait, I just want to say, I choose to live on the streets because Lawrence is a fun town. I choose to pay taxes and live on the streets. I have fun in this town, and you guys are... I, uh, I have fun in this town, and you guys are ruining it, you and your Parks and Recreation guys. And, uh, I just want to tell you guys that I'm a witness to everything that Mr. Tuttle and Mike is saying and accusing you guys of, because I've seen it. I've been, I've been flipped off by the city workers. They've been spraying our vehicles with gallons and gallons of city water, wasting it. The park's a swamp, it looks like crap. It used to be cool. People are, people, people can't even run, you know, we can't even run our dogs in there anymore, it's too muddy, just because they're mad at us, they're taking it out on the city. The, this, just this morning, two workers were mowing the yard, the park, and they were banging on our trailers and RVs while they were going by, while they were working, on the job, on the clock. They run over beer cans and they don't pick it up. Kids can run, you know, run over shredded beer cans and cut, you know, shred themselves. It's all over South Park right now. You guys are like what I see in the movies growing, growing up, but like, like a crappy version, like a, like a, like a crappy version of those, of those mob, of those racketeering mob movies, you know what I'm talking about? But you guys are like the Dollar General version of it, like you guys are, I mean, like, I laugh. I dance, I dance out on the streets giving up the peace sign, people give me the peace sign back, and, but they don't know that I'm just making, just fooling with, like, with you guys, you guys are, you guys make me laugh, and you guys are supposed to be my counsel, the city council. To, wow, this is my first time talking in front of like a council. I just want to leave, is like, you guys make me laugh. And, uh, thanks for the fun time, and please don't ruin it like you guys are. I mean, you guys, it's not too late to fix, you know? And, uh, tell your Parks and Recreation people, lay off the booze, they're getting kind of fat and lazy. They, they drive in the park, they were taking out the trash can by that, that building in South Park. Your guy drove in the, on the park grass up to the trash can in his truck to take the trash can and put it in the bed of his truck. That, that, I laughed so hard, and I was sober. It was, you guys are making me laugh, and I don't even, like, thank you. Good night. Swing to the sympathy of destruction.
Any additional public comment? Okay, public comment section is closed. Next item on the agenda is the future agenda items, staff.
Commissioners, next week, we're going to receive the request from the Bioscience and Technology Business Center. You all have already planned on the issuance of the debt for their Phase Two. Laverne App is going to be here, he wanted to make a formal presentation to the full commission, and we fully anticipate that being part of your 2013 debt proceedings as we work on that, on that capital budget. We'll have some other items as well on that, and we'll work through a number of these other issues, I think. Scott, have we decided on the, the North Mass project, the redevelopment behind Johnny's, as to when we were gonna have that?
I think May first is what we're planning.
Okay. So we'll get, get that memo updated as well, so that you'll see that that's coming.
All right, any commission questions? Public questions on the calendar? All right. I would say that we have completed our chore for tonight. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Cromwell, second...